If you want, Mayor.
I can't.
Yeah, technically.
Monday night football game.
I have.
I know Champion's Quest is here.
That my food harvest people are right here. OCFA's not here yet. Oh, no, yeah, they are. They're sitting on the side.
Yeah.
Robert, Robert.
And then I'll start with you.
All right. Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and start just a few moments early. I'm gonna turn it over to you, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council has returned from closed session with one item to report out. By unanimous vote, the City Council has approved the third tolling agreement with the BKK Working Group related to the BKK Corporation landfill facility in West Covina, California.
Thank you. So now we will reconvene in regular session. He gave us our report. We'll go right into our pledge of allegiance with Councilmember Hibbert, followed by the invocation by Councilmember Murphy. Y'all stand up with us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord of heaven, we seek your wisdom today and await your guidance. Teach us, Lord, to be calm and patient, especially when things are not turning out as expected or planned. May this new day bring us strength to help us face the challenges ahead and wisdom to choose the best course in this meeting tonight. Help us, Lord, so that every new moment is not spent in regret, guilt, fear, or anger, but in wisdom, understanding, and love. Amen.
Amen. All right, if I can get my colleagues to join me down front. All right. First, we have a presentation of a certificate to Joe. Pronounce your last name for me. Freya. Is that French?
It is.
Watch out now. Oh, and...
Reggie Warren.
Reggie, come on down. Come on down. We have the executive director, and you are a...
Assistant Athletic Director.
Assistant Athletic Director for Champion's Quest and recognition of being featured in the Mayor's Business Spotlight. Am I doing something with this? Is it me? Okay. The Business Spotlight Program is a free business recognition program designed to create awareness about the variety of local businesses located in Los Alamos. This Business Spotlight Program is a great way for the city to say, "Thank you", to showcase great businesses in Los Al and provide another tool to help our businesses grow. This month's recognized business is Champion's Quest. And so, I've already got you up here. I'm gonna...I'm not gonna read the blurb. I'm gonna let you tell us about what y'all got going, because you can say it better than me.
Okay. Reggie, I'll let you hold that. All right. Well, thank you, Mayor, for giving us this recognition this evening. We really do appreciate it. Champion's Quest is a youth sports academy here in Los Alamos, was started right in the community here almost 25 years ago. In April, we'll be celebrating our 25th year in business. We've helped thousands upon thousands of athletes, resulting in an excess of $10 million of scholarship money being awarded to those athletes for athletics. We work only with 8- to 18-year-old athletes, very unique. We provide a very structured curriculum, and we have a full-time staff of professional coaches that work with our athletes. So we're very proud of what we're building in Los Alamos, and we're looking to expand in other communities in the not-too-distant future. We...our trustees just changed our mandate from being only a community-based for Los Alamos business to allowing us to look at other markets that we could serve and help athletes in. So we're looking forward to that. But right now, we are born and raised in Los Alamos, and we're proud of that. So thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, thank you. All right, so we're gonna share a little sneak peek with you now, and you can view the full video on our city's YouTube channel after tonight's meeting. These promotional videos are provided to our participants free of charge to help spread the word about their businesses. And if you're interested, anybody, any business, big, small, nonprofit, whatever it is that you do in the city of Los Alamos, to help us grow in our economic development, you can reach out to Development Services at City Hall, and we will get you squared away. All right, so who's gonna push play on our tidbit? Tidbit's so small, there's no words. So I'll get to go and watch and see what all that we said. All righty. Okay, well, see, now, how this works is you walk to mine, you shake everybody's hand. Oh, wait, picture first? Okay, picture first. Then you shake all the hands.
Thank y'all, sir.
He's in North Carolina. He's coming out for our celebration at the end of the year for 25th. Yeah. Ian Phillips are coming out.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
My absolute pleasure. Okay. Okay, next, we have a presentation of a proclamation to Wayne Stickney, the Chief Development Officer, and Neil...I'm just gonna stick with Neil. Right? Is that all right with you? Fantastic. Board member of Second Harvest Food Bank and recognition of Hunger Action Month. You got...come on down. Come on down. Now, I will...which one of you would like to speak? Because I can always say stuff, but I feel like it's...
Could you give your words?
Yes.
Your Highness. Well, now. Well, thank you very much for hosting us. Neil and I represent the Hunger Alliance, and the Hunger Alliance is formed of three organizations: Abound Food Care, the Orange County Food Bank, and Second Harvest Food Bank. And our purpose is to address food insecurity throughout Orange County. And there's such a need, and I wanted to share two statistics. 267,000 of our neighbors are food insecure, 67,000 of which are children. And by standing up and making a proclamation for Hunger Action Month in September, you're all doing a good part in helping address food insecurity. And I wanna let Neil have a few words.
I just wanted to thank the Mayor and the City Council for acknowledging this really important cause. For me, I've grown up in Los Alamos. My parents live here, my kids go to school here, and it's great to see that this city takes this cause so seriously and is supporting this endeavor.
Absolutely. All righty. Y'all can come on. Mosey this way. Got a certificate for you. And then you...we take pictures, we do all the fun stuff. Shake all the hands.
So picture first, right?
Yeah, come on in here.
I'm gonna stand next to my favorite man.
Watch out.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a presentation of a proclamation to Orange County Fire Authority for Fire Prevention Week. And I'm gonna go a little off-script because I have a member from OCFA. So you wanna talk to your people?
Sure.
I know you do. Go on now.
On up. I love my firefighters. So... Yeah, I'll let them know. You know, I know we have Fire Prevention Week. Did it die? Oh, there we go. But we've also realized that we have no fire season anymore. It's year-round. So we are always on alert, always looking for ways to prevent fire, cutting back brush in some of the more remote areas and everything. And these guys do a great job of education and compliance and everything to make sure that when it does get bad, it's minimized the best we can. But I'm gonna lead it over to the professionals here.
Thank you very much, Mayor and honorable staff. We appreciate it. Fire Safety Week that we honor every year. When we do have an emergency in the city, it impacts each one of us. It's not the person having the emergency, but it impacts our community. So it's super-important for us to recognize where we can prevent that on the front end, whether it's fire safety, sprinkler systems, home alarms, fire safety programs. Our crews are out there with our community education stuff. So we spend a lot of time with that. We work well with the city with it, and we identify the needs of where we can fix that when a tragedy or an emergency happens. So thank you for taking the time to recognize this and for the proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. We appreciate you. All right, picture time. All right, my colleagues and I are gonna take our seat, and we gonna keep it moving. Okay. Next, we have a presentation by Robert Acosta, Support Services Manager, regarding Alert OC. Are you gonna do the presentation from there?
Yes.
Okay. It gave me the option to invite you to the podium. So you had the option of the podium, but...
I'll be happy to come to the podium.
Whatever you like, friend.
He's all dressed up. Let him come to the podium.
I'm gonna do what I like. I'm gonna come up to the podium. Mr. Miller told us to do what we're comfortable with, right? So my name's Robert Acosta. I'm Support Service Manager for Los LPD. And welcome, Mayor, Council, and staff. I was asked to talk about not just Alert OC, but our emergency mass notification systems that we have in place for the city. So this is FEMA's definition of emergency mass notifications. It's just a way for us to communicate with a small group of people or the whole city in a very rapid, very rapid form. We can be very surgical, where we can go citywide, and I'll explain that a little bit more as we get going. Our city uses two platforms. We use Alert OC and Wireless Emergency Alerts. They're commonly called WIA, the Wireless Emergency Alerts. We used to use Nixle. We've let that expire, because we had that in place, and we only ended up with a few hundred users, and it just wasn't as effective as these other two platforms. Alert OC can be sent out locally, meaning I can send it out from my office. We have about a half a dozen employees that are trained in Alert OC. We can even send it up out of our phone from home, which I did a couple weeks ago. The WIA emergency alerts are sent in conjunction and coordination with Orange County Emergency Management, where we work with them and we use...it's kind of a reverse 911 system. It's a little less specific on our audience, but it has an application, and I'll get to that in a second. Like I said earlier, we sent this out just a couple weeks ago. These are...this is a platform that we do use. This is Alert OC. This has to do with the tropical cyclone that we had. Well, if you were awake any time in the two weeks prior, you knew there was a hurricane or a cyclone coming. But what we use this for was to send out a couple messages that were very important, and that was one. We ran out of sandbags, so we had people come into our fire station and our other places, we just didn't have them. So we wanted to let them know, "We don't have them right now, and we're gonna have them in the next day or two." And then also, we asked...our dispatch center asked us to reach out to the people and ask them to stop calling 911 for storm updates. It was inundating the 911 center, so it was impacting their ability to do their job. So we sent this out, and we think it was effective. At least the calls slowed down a little bit. Alert OC is really the one...is the first platform that I'll talk about, and it's really the one we want to get people familiar with. This campaign that we're doing to get people to sign up, we're doing it here, we're doing it at all our social events, and like recently at the Celebrate Los Al event, we're handing these flyers out. We have them on our social media pages, and we have flyers in the back of the room for people to sign up. But we're really pushing to sign up, so if you could carry that message for us, we'd really appreciate it. We wanna get a good portion of our community signed up so that our messages are more effective. You know, just going back, when you sign up for Alert OC, you can sign up for different levels of...you can tailor-make your alerts to what you want. You can do just emergencies. You can do emergency and public events, public works notices of maybe road closures or something like that. So people can really tailor it to what they do. It's a very effective tool, and we're looking forward to using it. The WIA's that I talked about are the Wireless Emergency Alerts. They will capture all phones in a given geographical area, where we don't have to sign up for these. We can...people...we can just identify an area that we want to send a message to, and it'll come out, and it'll repeat itself at predetermined intervals. It's a very efficient system. It's very effective. It's just not very selective. But if we need to get something out, and I'll give you some examples in a minute of when we can put it out, and it's gonna be a tool that we...I've used in the past, and if we ever need it here, it's...you'll find it to be real effective. The two platforms that we use, Alert OC and the WIA, they have very specific uses, which I'm sure you probably have already figured out by now. But the Alert OC will be used to...as small a group is to call employees back to work if we have...if we need to get them back into work, if we need to avoid an area due to police activity, like a major accident on the boulevard or something, and also maybe a public works event if they break a water main, and we just want people to stay away from that area. Those are...and also, like the weather event we just had. We knew that event was coming, and we were able to send something out. The WIA events are more for imminent emergencies. We'll use them for evacuation orders. We'll use them for shelter-in-place orders or other similar-type messaging in a geographical area. Like I said earlier, it will capture all the cell phones in any given area and also the landlines using...just to screen the landlines. If you people pick it up, they'll receive those messages. There's no need to sign up for those. An example we like to use is if we had to evacuate, let's say, the Carrier Row neighborhood. We could work with Orange County management, say, "We need to evacuate Carrier Row". They'll utilize all the cell towers that feed that particular area and send that message in text and a voice message to evacuate Carrier Row. So anybody that's in Carrier Row or driving through it will receive that message. And then we'll...again, we'll have a predetermined interval, because if you're in Carrier Row and you're at Costco, you're not gonna receive that, not until you come back home. So we'll send it like every hour or until we've determined we don't need to send it out because we've already set up a perimeter or the emergency's been neutralized. This is the WIA...I mean, sorry. This is the Alert OC QR code. You can just click on it right now if you want, or you could do it at home. It's also at the bottom of all our flyers that we're handing out all over. But we'd really, really help you...like the public to take the time to sign up and get on this platform for us. And it makes our job as in public safety just a lot more effective. And that's all I have. Just if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take questions.
I got one quick question. Because I recall certain cities being out of sandbags, but then other cities still had sandbags. So does the Alert OC or WIA have the functionality to say, "Okay, we're out, but there's bags here"?
We could program it to say what we want, but then that was...there's a dilemma of sending our residents to another city to grab their sandbags. And so, we just...we did everything we can to get them filled right away. We ran out late on Saturday night, and we had them restocked by Sunday morning. So it was a relatively short period. And then the storm wasn't as bad as everybody...
I was curious. On the geographic location, what...is that a half-mile, certain number of feet? Or how do you determine how to notify that area?
So we would identify an area on a map. We would draw...work in with Orange County management. We would draw out the area that we want evacuated. And then the...what we call Control One, which is the county emergency management, would determine which would be the best cell towers to use. So there's unfortunately some bleed over. You'll get some people out of that area that you want. And for some reason, and they haven't really figured out why, but then we'll get people from Placentia, you know, that will get our message. And it's just...it's inherent in the system. We're not...they're still working through those bugs.
Thank you. I signed up.
Good. Thank you. I hope you all do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robert. All right, we will move on to Item 7, which is Oral Communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. I have a request that if you come to speak, please fill out a blue sheet. Or I should have my paper up there, where you can write your name on the podium or sign in at the podium, please. Do I have any speakers present? Okay.
Yes, my name is Art DeBolt. I'm a resident of Los Alamos. I'm here to talk about the ALUC, the Airport Land Use Commission, and their findings of inconsistency for the city of Los Alamos and their housing element. I watched the council meeting...prior council meeting, and I was left with a bunch of questions. I did some research into ALUC, because I'd never heard of ALUC, believe it or not. Been on the planning commission many times. It's never crossed our desk, and to so to speak. And even while I was on the City Council, never had any interaction with them years ago. So this was kind of news to me. So I did kind of a deep dive into ALUC. And what I found kind of surprised me. What I found is that the findings...I would refer to them as specious. They were...they have the ring of truth and plausibility, but when you read them, I found that basically ALUC, they twisted, and they basically contradicted their own planning guidelines. And I will refer to...I'm gonna kind of...I'll be specific here. The staff report on January 29 for ALUC to the commission...to their commission recommended a finding of inconsistency based on three sections of the AELUP for JFTB Los Alamos. And then they cite various sections. Section 2.11, aircraft noise. Another section, PUC sections 2164A and B. And then the third section, their general land use policies, 3.21. I'll take these in order, okay? Regarding noise, section...they refer to the...they find the inconsistency based on these. Section 2.1.1, aircraft noise. And then they state that, quote, "Aircraft noise emanating from airports may be incompatible with the general welfare of the inhabitants within the vicinity of the airport", close quote. That is a sentence that is lifted out of context entirely, out of a single sentence, that started off with that phrase, and then continued on to say that it is within the vicinity of an airport. And in order to measure the impact of aircraft noise on inhabitants within the vicinity of the airport, the Land Use Commission adopts the Community Noise Equivalent Level methodology as specified in the California Airport's Code. All right? So they lifted that sentence out as a standalone, that one phrase in a sentence, and use that as their rationale for finding inconsistency. If you go on and read the full text of that section, which I'm...2.1.1, which I'm not gonna get into, it lays out what our staff person here, Ron Noda, clearly pointed out about the properties in zone...the number six and number 10 falling within the noise contours and that they would be allowed to be developed with conditions. And I will quote the ALUC, okay? ALUC. And this is in the staff report, okay? And it says that the AELUP for JTB Los Alamos states that residential uses within the 60 dB noise zone is normally consistent, but that the noise impact in that area is sufficient to require sound attenuation as set forth in the California noise standards. The commission strongly recommends that residential units be limited or excluded from this area unless sufficiently sound attenuated. It goes on to say that it needs to be attenuated down to .45. So this is their...what came out of that 2.21, but it's conveniently left out in their finding, the number-one finding in their inconsistency. Number two in their findings, they refer to PUC section 2164A and 2164B, which says that in the PUC there, it's to, quote, "assist local agencies ensuring compatible land uses in the vicinity of existing airports to the extent that the land in the vicinity of these airports is not already devoted to incompatible uses." The lands that we have identified are all developed. Laurel Park is developed. The site on Lamson is... I'm gonna ask for more time if I can...
How much more time you think you need, sir?
Probably five minutes. I'm gonna guess.
I can give you three. I'll give you three.
Well, I'll press on, but...okay, thank you. We'll see how we go here. Okay. So anyway...so these lands are already developed, okay? If you want to go further with defined vicinity, what is vicinity? You have College Park to the south, fully developed. Laurel Park within 500 feet, Cross Cutella, you got Apartment Row. These are all in fully developed. They are not undeveloped, okay? And these are already developed with incompatible uses. So this one is a specious argument. Number three was their land use section, which states that they're within the boundaries of the LEP. And I will just say that the... Okay, so that...I misplaced that one. But I want to go on and talk about the...the bottom line is that each one of these has been twisted. They've been lifted out. It's as if the...they've modified these to fit the decision they wanted to make. Does that mean that there's political considerations to this? I would just say, if you look at the minutes of the meeting for that, you're gonna find that one of the representatives is Starsick. She's a resident of Seal Beach. She's a council member, current council member in Seal Beach. The alternate for her is Gary Miller, former city councilman in the city of Seal Beach, also a resident of College Park East. One of the other members of the ALUC, the chairman, his alternate is Patty Campbell, again, a former city council member in the city of Seal Beach and a resident of College Park East. I would just say that my recommendation...and if you go into the minutes of the meeting, there were questions regarding specifically asked, "Well, how many votes will it take for Los Al to override this?" It'll take a four-fifths vote. Why was that question even raised in a meeting like that? If this is to be an objective findings of what you're trying to get, why are they having a discussion regarding how many votes it's gonna take to override? The minutes are very telling. I would encourage everybody to look at them. I would encourage our staff to get a recording of the minutes so that you can see the interaction or hear the interaction, if any, of how these findings were made or what was surrounding it. Lastly, I'll just say and give a recommendation. I would recommend that, absent an override, I would recommend an override just simply on the fact that they're not even following their own planning documents at all. But number two, I think I would resubmit the plan, the current plan that we have. Submit it with a stern letter from our attorney, pointing out the inconsistencies in their staff report, and ask them for a second look.
Okay.
That...an unbiased second look. And if there are people that are biased, be they alternates who can contribute to the conversation but maybe not vote. So is the ALUC commission really a 10-member board? A nine-member board with only so many that can vote? I don't know, but...
Thank you, Art.
I think we need to take a deep...
Mr. DeBolt. Thank you, Mr. DeBolt. Okay. We will move on to Item 8, updates from the mayor. At this time, the mayor will report on items not specific. At this time, the mayor will report on items not specifically described on the agenda that are of interest to the community, provided no action or discussion is taken. I got to start with the Celebrate Los Al recap. Oh my goodness. If you didn't make it out there, you missed some fun. The Memorial Care Miller Children and Women's Hospital Long Beach Celebrate Los Al was held this past Saturday with the following events. We had UWS Race Los Al, Serve Los Al, My City My Los Al Street Fair, Public Safety Fair by the Los Alamos PD, Pine Streets by the Los Alamos Development Services Department. We had a carnival, we had a veterans' recognition, and then we had a UWS Glow Run. It was a great day to celebrate our wonderful city by running the streets of Los Al, serving the local nonprofits, supporting our local restaurants and businesses, honoring our veterans, supporting our Los Alamos PD, and just enjoying our amazing community at the street fair and carnival. I have to give a special thank you to our sponsors, vendors, nonprofits, our elected officials, our city staff, and for the community for coming out to celebrate Los Al. We estimated that about 7,000 people came out throughout the entire day, making it our second-largest city special event. So, that's a pretty big deal. Pretty big deal. Next, I would like to share about our Elevate Women's Conference. Join us for the City of Los Alamos Second Annual Elevate Women's Conference on Wednesday, October 11, from 8:30 till 1 o'clock at the Los Alamos Community Center. You can take time to invest in yourself and your future. In this half-day conference, you'll open your mind to new concepts to help you achieve your best self, both personally and professionally. Learn new tactical skills that will shift your mindset, and connect with local women like yourself, who are also committed to growing. Pre-registration is $40 and is required, and the event is targeted for 18-plus. Lunch is included. You can register today, as the seating is limited, and registration information can be found on our city's website. And then one of my other favorite events, trunk or treat. We are inviting local businesses and organizations, or just people that have a trunk big enough to give candy out of, okay? To have a trunk at the Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital Long Beach Trunk or Treat, and there's no way to shorten that. Like, I've looked at it multiple, there is no way to shorten that. But come on out to the trunk or treat presented by Southland Credit Union on Saturday, October 21st, from 5 to 7:30 at Little Cottonwood Park. To make our trunk or treat possible, we need a lot of trunks. We need people to come out, you have to have, what is it, 2,500 pieces of candy? Minimum of 2,500 pieces of candy. For reference, I think last year I had 5,000 pieces of candy, and I was the last man standing. Everyone else ran out. I had a little bit left. So it's a very well-attended event. We have upwards of 5,000 that come out to have fun in a safe environment. And then the top three tricked-out trunks will win a gift card. Trunk applications on our city website, cityoflosalamitos.org. And then we've got our Sterns Park Rehabilitation Project. I'm really excited about this. My kids call it the Digger Park, because they have those little shovel things. But we are hard at work with the reimagining of Sterns Park with the assistance of Community Development Block Grant and your tax dollars. We will be constructing a brand-new inclusive park that will include a new sidewalk and parking spaces that will allow for increased accessibility, graduated play options that allow children a variety, with a variety of challenges that require motor planning, critical thinking, upper body strength. And then we also have picnic structures, we're redoing the picnic structures, and exercise equipment that are also inclusive. We're looking to begin construction with an expected completion date of spring 2024. Very excited about that. And then something that is just near and dear to me is our senior transportation program. And I'm not going to steal too much thunder, but at our last meeting, we discussed some options regarding our senior transportation, which in Los Al, 50 and over is a senior. I'm sure some people are wondering, like, how can I get senior transportation? That's the first litmus. We asked staff to develop a plan for a circulator that would go throughout the city to help our seniors get around, because it is very important to me and to our staff that our seniors not just be taken to the doctor, not just be taken to the pharmacy, but be able to go and live and have a life outside of their homes. So, we've only worked on it for like, a couple of weeks, but it sounds like the staff are about ready to bring back a plan for a pilot program that would provide on-demand ride service for our seniors. And I'm so thankful. So, thank you to our staff for being proactive and finding solutions to help our senior population. All right, next, we will move on to nine, which would be updates from the city staff.
Actually, Mayor, I think you covered just about everything.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I get too excited. All right. Emmeline, did you have anything? I don't want to forego you. No nothing, no neither? Okay. All right, well, we will speed on along to item 10, which are the warrants. The attached warrant register contains checks and electronic fund transfers from said dates. With my page, so, can I get a motion in a second?
Well, I just have a few questions, if I may. All right, Mr. Koller, I just have a few questions that I hope you can assist me with.
Well, I'll try.
On page 10, in the middle of the page, it says miscellaneous vendor. Is there a name for that vendor?
The refund was for Rosa Flores, her security deposit refund, returned.
Okay, great. For our Los Al, it says city council meetings, is that January 23 through 6/23 on page 10?
Is it page 10?
Yes. Says our Los Al, the vendor sort key.
I'm sorry, I think it's page 12. Well, page, I think it's page 11, okay. Well, the service dates are August for that. Was that your question?
For our Los Al on page 10 of 109, it says city council meetings 01/23-06. Is that through 6/23?
I'm not seeing that on page 11, I see there's three.
No, page 10.
Director, she's referring to page 10 of the packet. It looks like it's page three of the warrants.
Oh, okay. Oh yeah. Yeah, well, apparently it does say January 23.
Oh no, is that through 6/23? It's just because the column had cut off.
Yeah, that should be 6/23, June of 23.
6/23?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's going to be, the 1190 will be attributed to Los Alamos TV?
Yes.
Okay. And then on page 18 or page 11 of the warrants, it says our Los Al for 8/23, and it says the fund is general fund, but the department is city council?
There's a charge that's normally monthly for the city council, the 41667. Any other charges are to the other departments?
For the 1190 on page 10, that's for other departments?
1190?
Yeah. I just, I just want to confirm that the 1190 on page 10, which is the city council meetings from January 23 to 6/23, which is attributed to Los Alamos TV for the 1190, is different than the page 18?
It is.
It is, okay. And... Is there also, I looked through all the warrants, have you, you haven't received the July 23, correct? It hasn't been input into the warrants for the our Los Al?
If it's not here, then it wouldn't be, no.
Okay. Because the one on page 18 says 8/20/23. So I was wondering, is the 7/20/23, would that be located somewhere else?
If it's not here, I'll have to check.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Sure.
I'll move the warrants.
Roll call vote, Mayor Dobie?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Nefolda?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Hibbard?
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Next, we will move on to item 11, which is the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull? Nope. Okey-dokey. Then, what is it?
A motion and a second.
Okay, a motion and a second?
I'll move it.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll go on to 12, which is the purchasing policy ordinance. Can I get a staff report?
Of course, Madam Mayor. Just before I turn it over to Craig, I can provide just a brief, kind of 30,000-foot view. We obviously go through our policies very frequently and try to identify ways that we might be able to actually gain some efficiency, or be able to pick up a little bit of speed with the way that we do our work internally. This policy was originally brought to the council a couple of years ago, where we actually moved to raise the spending authority for the city manager. The reason for that at the time was because of the number of projects that we had going on, and also to allow us to actually be able to go out and make purchases in a timely manner. Since that time, we have almost tripled the amount of projects that we are currently doing. So we now have about 30-some-odd active CIP projects that are working throughout the city. What we are finding with all of this is that every time we go to do a project, it takes about eight months from the time that you authorize the amount of money for us to go out and do something, to go through the RFP process, to go through the award process. We think that we can be faster than that. And so, this item was put together in consultation with the Budget Standing Committee in order to update the general terms of what exactly is in the purchasing policy. The main topic, and I'll let Craig get into the details, is that it would raise the purchasing authority from $50,000 that it is today to $100,000. And with that, I'll turn it over to Craig.
Thank you, Chet. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. Bit of the background, main area of this, of this change is, as the city manager mentioned, the increase from the city manager's authority from 50,000 to 100,000. It's, this is, we found this to be necessary because of a number of projects that are coming forward. We have put in place for this also a control measure. The updated ordinance now requires the city manager to promptly notify the Budget Standing Committee in writing of any purchase of more than 80,000. The control measure is repeated in sections 2.60090, which is informal purchasing procedures, and section 2.60.150 for professional services. In addition to this, the, another change was section 2.60.080 for open-market purchasing requires now a purchase of equipment and supplies for non-professional services with an estimated value of up to 10,000 may be made by a purchase officer in the open market. Previously, the purchase PO limit was 5,000, so anything up to 10,000 will require a purchase order. Let's see, one other thing was the formal purchasing procedure, section 2.60100, purchase of equipment, supplies, and non-professional services estimated value more than 100,000 should be made following issuance of public notice requests for proposals. Formal contracts must be awarded by the city council. The existing threshold of this is more than 50,000. The exception for purchase orders required, section 2.60.130, purchase of supplies and equipment shall be made by the purchase order provided, however, that any city department that maintains a city-issued credit card may make purchases with a credit card of less than $2,500. A single transaction purchase of supplies and equipment is being changed from 1,500 to 2,500 to facilitate more efficiencies and control over credit card use. Exceptions to purchase procedures, section 2.60.140. The updated ordinance clarifies existing exceptions to standard procurement procedures, which is sole purchase, sole source procurement, was first one. Proprietary procurements, emergency purchases III, and purchases through other public agencies would all be exceptions. These exceptions are already codified in the existing ordinance. The updated ordinance adds language to better explain when the exceptions would actually apply. These proposed modifications will better align with the operating needs to result in increased efficiencies, to workflow, and more efficient operations for the city. Is it anticipated that the org proposed orders will result in administrative cost savings due to the increased efficiency arising from the increase in threshold amounts, city manager contract authority, and streamlining of procurement procedures? With that, I look forward to your questions.
Are there any questions?
I have, I have a couple of things to share. I understand the changes for this policy, there's a lot of things in this policy that I agree with to help with efficiencies. My challenge on this particular one is the, the challenges or the struggles that we've had with our finances this year while I've been on council. My third year on council, we overstated our franchise fees by about 10 million, that was in March. Our, our financial statements have been pulled three times for various, you know, issues or concerns, and we've had about $15,000, I think this was the last fiscal year, that were attributed to the city council budget, that were, they had to be fixed, to go back and fix that. And then with our 2324 budget, on, I recall, on one page, there was a $750,000 in, the math, the math was wrong. So, I understand the policy, but because of these, these mistakes, these errors that I've seen in my short time on, on council, this unfortunately isn't a policy that I can, I can get behind.
Okay. Anybody else have questions or anything that they would like to share?
Yeah, I do. So, I know that this purchase policy was initially introduced in May 2023, and it didn't include the verbiage for section 2.60.060B that indicates that the city manager would promptly notify the Budget Standing Committee. Why was that included now?
Originally, it was at your request.
I'm sorry?
It was a request that was made by the council?
No, my request was to reduce it from 100,000 to 80,000, and for it to be promptly put in writing for city council. It was never about the Budget Standing Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, the notion of why it was put in was originally raised by the council, that was at the recommendation of the Budget Standing Committee.
Okay. Now, each of these decisions that are, the purchasing authority affects the community as a whole, which is of five members of the city council. So why is it that the Budget Standing Committee would be the one who'd make the decision in regards to be notified in writing of any purchases above 80,000? And why isn't it the city council as a whole of five members?
That is a question for the Budget Standing Committee. I can say from, just anecdotally, that the Budget Standing Committee obviously has a lot of interaction with the budget and the finances on a more frequent basis than the rest of the council.
Okay. But in consideration, as councilmember Hibbard had stated, there have been errors that have been located over the last few months since we've been on council. So I would think it would be prudent that all the council members be privy to any purchases above 80,000.
It's, again, this is a recommendation of the Budget Standing Committee, it's...
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. So, in regards to budget appropriation required for purchases in section 2.60.070, what is defined as an emergency?
Just because I want to make sure that we, I use the correct terminology, let's see, attorney, I don't know if you would like to take that one?
Sure. Within, if I may, within the sub-paragraph C of section 26140 that deals with the exceptions to the standard procurement policies, it says, I'll just read it to you, it says, "When emergency conditions require the immediate purchase of equipment, supplies, or non-professional services from a known available source of supply, for purposes of this section, emergency purchases are those procurements that are required to prevent immediate interruption or cessation of necessary city services, or to safeguard life, property, or the public health and welfare." or cessation of necessary city services or to safeguard life, property, or the public health and welfare." It goes on to say, in the last sentence of this section, "That the purchasing officer shall promptly file with the City Council a report showing such emergency conditions and the necessity for such action, together with an itemized account of all expenditures."
And if I can, I can provide kind of an example that I've just recently, that I was thinking about with regards to the hurricane or the tropical storm that did not turn out to be much of one. We had, and our, through our emergency services manager, had gone out and secured, we won't call it contracts, but agreements that we would have access to lumber and those kind of things if we needed to board up windows in an emergency-type situation like that. So we do benefit from the fact that we have some of these partners in town, and that obviously would be our first goal, will be to purchase those supplies in town, but only when needed.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. In the formal purchasing procedure, Section 2.60.100, it states that a publicly noted request for proposals. Where would it be publicly noted and how long would the duration be?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Noda to take that one, but I believe it is in the newspaper and it is listed on the city's website.
Correct. And we've gone through, we've recently transitioned to BidNet, which is an online bidding, I guess, portal that we do. So we do BidNet, but for the time being, once we've fully transitioned to BidNet, we are also doing our old method, which is, we're always gonna do posting in the paper. We put it on our city website, but we also do it, I believe it's called the, like, the Green Book, which is another type of outreach for RFP process. And we do it, it depends on the project, but we have, we do it in minimum three weeks.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Noda. In regards to purchase orders required for Section 2.60.130, how does increasing the limit amount of the purchasing power provide control over credit card use?
Previously, what was occurring is that because the single purchase limit was $1,500, there were several workarounds in various instances where multiple cards were used to secure the purchase. This will increase the limit, the single purchase limit to $2,500. Anything in excess of that would require a purchase order.
That, and I think that the more nuanced would be just that a policy really shouldn't be designed in a way that has workarounds. And if you can just simply spread the cost over multiple credit cards, it kind of defeats the purpose of having that limit. And we were hitting that limit regularly, and so redesigning the policy in order to fit the current practice made more sense. So that we are all say this, that we're adhering to policy and not just the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law as well.
Right.
Thank you. Let me see. Let me find out the final question? No?
That is it. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for explaining everything to me. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. You good? Pretty good? You good? Okay, I will ask for a motion.
Madam Mayor. If we can have this page, can I read its title?
Yeah, if I may, I'll just go ahead and read, introduce the ordinance title. So before the council for consideration this evening is ordinance number 2023-04 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Amending and Restating Chapter 2.60 Purchasing System of the Los Alamos Municipal Code." Thank you.
With that, I will make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. I got a motion and a second, and now I need a roll call vote.
Mayor Dobie?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Nefolda?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Hibbard?
No.
Councilmember Murphy?
Abstain.
All right, we will move on to item 13, which is a discussion item. Consideration of a K-9 program. That was perfect timing. Oh, my God.
It's the chief's welcome music, actually.
It was my firefighters doing that.
Perfect.
I'm still trying to get over her comment about how much she enjoys her firefighters as we're about to talk about canines.
I'm a fan of PD.
Not you.
I love PD. Well, we leave her out of it. All right. So the item for council consideration is the implementation of a K-9 program. I'd like a staff report. You got my staff report, chief?
Actually, we do. We have, are attempting to get the policy, which is the first step in getting the program in full effect. Next will be our procedures, and then will be the equipment. And then we'll be able to go select the K-9 itself. In attempting to explain this need for this program, I would like to provide some background if I could. As far as a K-9 program, I wanted to mention some of the benefits that this would bring to the city. The obvious are the operational benefits that it would have, and the most obvious being the apprehension of a suspect. So the ability to send a K-9 into a situation that would be dangerous for an officer themselves to go into, and this is done to save lives, officers' lives, to not put themselves in a situation that we could use a K-9 for. Another would be the ability of a K-9 to search large areas in a fraction of the time that it would take an officer to do so. If you could try to imagine a large warehouse in the city that had an alarm call, we would need several officers from multiple agencies to be able to come in and search that, that a dog would be able to do by itself in a fraction of that time. A dog can also be trained, cross-trained to do things such as find missing persons, narcotics detection, or even article searches. Dogs nowadays can find not only handguns, but there are even canines that have been trained to be able to find pieces of electronics, thumb drives, for search warrants for kiddie porn and things of that nature that suspects will hide. Canines have been trained to be able to locate those as well. And we're not proposing this, but some districts have even utilized canines for locker searches at schools because there's no expectation of privacy there, to have a dog walk up and down the hallways. They can be trained, as I mentioned, narcotics, but also bomb-making devices can be found as well. The obvious one, another obvious benefit would be the community engagement aspect. Just think of any possible community event that you could have, and the dog immediately becomes a star of the show at any and every event. An unknown benefit that I'd like to point out is a workman's comp issues. So dogs can be utilized to search spaces and areas that could put an officer in a situation where they could be injured, crawling into ceiling spaces, inside of, under a house, or areas that could pose a threat to an officer being injured that otherwise would not need to be. Apprehending a fleeing suspect rather than having to fight with the suspect herself could also help prevent injury to an officer. So these are hidden benefit, and, and one that has, every agency is struggling with these days is recruitment and retention. And being able to advertise that we actually have a K-9 officer here in the city of Los Alamos would be a huge benefit to the department. That's all I have.
Okey dokey. Was that it? Okay. All right. Do I have any questions or comments from colleagues here?
Thank you for pursuing this. I think it'd be a great program for all the reasons, you know, for all the reasons that you shared. I know there was some discussion in the state, the Capitol earlier this year to try to, you know, keep agencies from having canines. So thanks for, thanks for sticking to it.
I'm sure there are hidden benefits we haven't thought of.
No, I think this is an incredible program. I'm so glad you pursued it, so I'm, I'm all for it.
You know I'm ready for the dog, so.
I've been asked about that dog losing its foot in the city yet more times than I've been asked about anything else since we've even talked about it, about, what, a year ago, maybe? So yes, I've lost count.
Kenny Randaberry asks me daily.
Yes.
Poor's Elvis.
Yes.
We need Elvis in the building.
Elvis needs to be in the building. Yes, I agree.
But I think that's also a testament to the amazingness, and I, you know, I might get flack for bragging on my staff, but I got the best staff. I've been around enough that the biggest thing they want to know about is a dog.
And the support of the community.
Is amazing.
Is amazing.
It's amazing. I'm so excited for that. So...
Actually, if you don't mind, Mayor, I have another, one more question. I was curious, how many officers do we have in the department that are interested in, in, in having the K-9?
So we have some that do not have enough tenure yet to be able to put in for the position, but serious interest, I've been made aware of three that are seriously interested in the position. So much so that they've paid to put themselves through training to get, to become a K-9 handler.
I just have one further question, Madam Mayor. How long is the training usually for that?
To send a handler and a dog through, they'll go through the course together, and I just don't recall off the top of my head. I believe it's a six-week course, but don't quote me on that.
Okay.
I'll, I can get that information and send that out to everybody.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All righty. If there are no other comments or questions, I'm looking for a motion to move forward with the K-9 program.
I will move it.
And I'll second.
All right. What you need? All in favor? Aye. Did everybody say aye? All right, need a call for something else? All right, cool. Okay. Oh, the, the direction for staff. Go get the dog.
Go get Elvis, please.
Does it have to be more formal than that?
Yeah. We're already currently getting the car outfitted, so it's, it's coming.
I'm so excited.
Go to the Legion and talk Kenny, please.
Right. All right. So we will move on to item 14, which are council announcements. At this time, council members may also report on items not specifically described on the agenda that are of interest to the community, provided no action or discussion is taken except to provide staff direction to report back or to place the item on a future agenda. So we will start with Councilmember Hibbard.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the last council meeting, I attended a League of California Cities meeting with various council members from Brea, Garden Grove, Santa Ana, Cypress, Seal Beach, and more. We voted on our 24 leadership positions, so I'd like to extend a congratulations to all the new electeds with the Cal Cities. I also attended the Association of California Cities Training at UC Irvine. The training was called Public Policymakers Academy, and we discussed county programs and policies with Supervisor Wagner and participated in presentations on county demographics, regional boards, public safety, and labor unions. I attended a OC Department of Public Works traffic study here in Rossmore where we discussed some traffic issues that they're having, and I was particularly interested because Bradbury was one of the streets that was included in that traffic study. And so Bradbury's on the Rossmore side and in, in the Highlands. So wanted to see what they were, what they were talking about over there. Also, and maybe this isn't unique to the Highlands, but the Highlands is having an issue with mosquitoes, mice, and rats. So this past Friday, we hosted a small gathering at, at a residence house and invited OC Vector Control Inspector, Mr. John Hill, and he provided an update with what's going on specifically in the Highlands, as well as what they're doing on the base. There've been some unintended consequences from some things that are happening on the base. Two, two things in particular, the solar panel project was about 100 acres. Great project, but what those solar panels are doing inadvertently, they're keeping the birds of prey away from the field mice, so the field mice are coming into our neighborhood. So far, a resident on Kempton is setting the record with 40 mice caught in, in two weeks. So the guys are kind of battling it out on who catches the most mice, which I find absolutely disgusting. Joint Forces Training Base Commander Waddell and Director of Public Works Commander Vu also attended that meeting in the Highlands on Friday to talk about, you know, give an update on, on what's happening. I also got to speak with Chet Simmons with, about this issue, so hopefully we'll have some sort of solution coming up shortly, you know, for that. Another thing that's happening in the base is the flood channel that is behind the Highlands and on the base was not being maintained properly. And so now it's determined to be a wetlands. And so now a state permit and a federal permit is needed to go in there to address this issue. So there's a few things that, that are happening, but I think with some creative solutions, we'll get rid of that. This Saturday, I participated in the 5K Race Los Al, so congratulations to Emlyn Noda and the team. It was absolutely, I mean, fantastic. I don't know how anyone even came to work today because it was, I mean, from sunup to sundown, it was absolutely amazing. The 5K, I had fun. I had a lot of fun. I was definitely not the fastest, but did that. And then later that, later that evening on Saturday was my favorite part of the day where we had the opportunity to honor our World War II and Korean War veterans, which always makes me emotional. I'm one of those very, one of those people that comes from a very patriotic family. So for those that weren't able to attend, I wanted to, I wanted to read the names of my neighbors in the Highlands, of the, the gentlemen who served in World War II and Korea. So I'll conclude my statements by reading their names. First is my next-door neighbor, Mr. Maurice Calphus, World War II. My other next-door neighbor, Mr. Eddie Irvin, Korea. My other neighbor, Mr. George Burlacher, Korea. My other Highlands neighbor, Mr. Mike Nilson, Korea. And my other Highlands neighbor, Mr. Wayne Crane. So thank you, gentlemen, for your service.
Councilmember Murphy?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I wanted to personally commend Officers Navarro and Merzadeh. I believe that's how...
Merzado.
Merzado. They, for their proactive efforts to enforce the removal of a non-conforming sidewalk vendor or mobile food facility that did not have a valid permit to be open for business in our Los Alamos community, per Bill 972. I just want to say, we're fortunate to have the Los Alamos police officers as the guardians of our community, and their hard work does not go unnoticed. I also want to say, I had the amazing opportunity to take a tour of the Food Finders Warehouse in Los Alamos, where through the help of hundreds of volunteers, they coordinate the daily pickup of surplus food, which keeps the food scraps out of the landfills, and then takes it directly to their own nonprofit partners for use or distribution to feeding families in our community. They're just truly phenomenal, what they do. I also attended the City of Hope OC Beam Signing Ceremony, where a number of elected officials, physicians, construction crew members, patients, and hundreds of tradespeople celebrated the completion of the steel structure of Orange County's only hospital, which will focus exclusively on treating and curing cancer. There was also a steel beam that was covered in handwritten messages of hope for the community, and it was the last beam raised to complete the incredible structure. I also attended the celebration and life of Nancy Fagan, who sadly departed this life at the age of 102. I spoke with several of her family members who remarked about how Nancy loved the city of Los Alamos and how she was excited to attend the council meeting where she was honored. I was told that she excitedly practiced her speech on the way to the meeting and was happy she could finish it during her public comments. And because of her love of tomatoes, I've now tried to enjoy tomatoes. Additionally, I, along with my daughter, volunteered for a few hours at Precious Life Shelter. I attended the Community Center Grand Opening of Westminster with Michelle Steele. And I also volunteered at the carnival ticket sales at the Celebrate Los Al Street Fair this past September 16th, which was filled with a variety of so many vendors. I was full off of the, the tasting. It, it's amazing how much you can get from each of these amazing, just incredible restaurants. I just want to thank Emlyn Noda again for her remarkable staff, who always arrange memorable events in the city of Los Alamos. We couldn't be who we are or what we are without the recreation staff. So thank you.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Couple of things here. I serve on the Americana Award Nomination Committee, and we met this last week. We selected our 2024 Citizen of the Year, which is super duper duper top secret for a few months. But they will be coming and announcing that. The Americana Awards will be Saturday, March 16th. It's a change of venue. It's at the Weston Anaheim Resort. So we will be hearing more about that. So no more Mickey Mouse dessert. But as part of the Budget Standing Committee, we did a review of our pension paydown. Just a little bit of history, in 2022, council approved a UAL Paydown Funding Policy that will pay off our unfunded pension liability within 12 years instead of the 20 years, with an estimated savings of $2.2 million. In January of 2022, the Budget Standing Committee brought to council for approval the creation of a Section 115 Trust. Council approved, and a 115 Trust was set up, but no funding was identified. The goal was to do the administrative setup, so it was shovel-ready when we needed it. Recently, CalPERS, or CalPERS last year had forecasted a 6.8% Recently, Calpurs, well, Calpers last year had forecasted a 6.8% return on their investments, and in typical Calpers' style, the actuals came in at a negative 6.1%, so it was a 12.9% swing. In all my years here, I've never seen Calpers come up on the positive, which adds absolutely to our bottom line of what we owe for our unfunded liability. So based on those results, we are looking to start funding the 115 Trust, so we won't be affected by bad investment policies from Calpers. Calpers has a very antiquated investment policy, like no tech stocks. Tobacco stocks are okay, so they really need to update that. They won't. So we're just going to kind of take back a little bit of that control, so at least we won't be losing 13%. We might be making a couple points. We had our Los Al Foundation meeting this last week. We've been in effect for about a year now. At the beginning of the foundation's creation, we asked each of the departments in Los Al to give us a wish list item that the general fund would not be able to fund in the near future. So from Public Works, they want to become Tree City USA. It's a designation that's just really cool. So we, this last week, we approved to fund Phase 1 for purchase and planting of 20 trees. That piece alone will now qualify us to be Tree City USA. So we're going to submit the paperwork and get our banners, and Mayor, you're going to plant a tree.
Yes!
The, one of the standards is that Tree Cities need to spend at least $2 per capita, or $22,000. And what a coinkadink, that's exactly how much those 20 trees has cost. So that's Phase 1. It's going to be a continuation. The goal from Public Works is to plant 100 trees, so we plan on doing this four more times through the foundation, and I don't see any reason why we couldn't. The next one, which we've been talking about a lot, near and dear to my heart, is the canine program. The foundation committed to support the purchase of the dog, the ongoing vet care, food, and other supplies. The money is already in the bank for the dog, thankful to Kenny Brandon Barry and his, his buddies. I hope she will be named Elvis soon. The vet care and food and other supplies, vet care is extremely expensive. They usually say to budget about $1,000 a month, and not as though you're going to be using that every month, but these dogs need to be in pristine condition at all times. So if they break a tooth, it gets fixed right away. If they have any kind of abrasions or, or anything like that, and any kind of struggles, they're treated right away. So, so we've got that. The foundation has enough money set aside for the care and food for the dog for 12 months. And lastly, because I had to drag it out of our park and rec, their wish list was to create adaptive and inclusive recreation programs for our special needs kids. It's, it's to add areas where special needs will be able to participate in our events since just Truck and Treat, Spring Carnival, and Winter Wonderland. A lot of them are sensory, or light sensitivity, different things like that. Emlyn knows exactly what she's doing on that. And also partnering with the school district, and our police department has already bought into it to create special events just for our special needs kids, soccer games, softball games, all kinds of good stuff. I will be bringing it to the foundation board this next month to fund them $10,000 for the seed money to get this started. So within a year, we've been able to at least touch all three wish lists with more money to come. So I'm very, very proud of this foundation, and we had a mission, and I don't work in government time, I like to work in corporate time. And so thanks to the city, we've been able to do that. So, and that's all I've got.
Protem Nefolda?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo my thanks to the staff for the great weekend. I had the family out at 7:30 in the morning, and we closed the place down after the Beer Garden closed, and I hope I'm personally supporting the foundation through the, through the Beer Garden. But other than that, I have nothing to report this month.
Okay. All righty, well, I've been a few places, but I try to always come back with something, okay? I'm not really big, it's a secret. You ready? I don't like taking pictures, so if you see me in one, I was compelled. But I always come back with something in my hand. So I went to a helihydrant infrastructure tour out in Yorba Linda, and we kind of saw the way that they can tamp down on the fires. They've got the, where the Santa Anas can rush through these, it's, I don't, it's like a inverted cave almost through the mountains, and once the fire comes through, it's almost unstoppable. So they have a helihydrant right there, which is just a big helicopter that has this hose, and it's a professional copter flyer, because they hover, and they suck the water up out of this, like, pool, it's a ground pool, that replenishes as the water's sucked up, and then it can just shoot out and attack a fire, like, with such expedience. And it's great, because they're building others. Now, we know, we have, what is it that we have at the base? It's SCE, they bought the big, 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 big that we have access to, but where thankfully, fires are not necessarily our conundrum here, but it was still interesting to see how a sister city, and see, you know, well, is there anything that my city could do to help? Because we like to kind of help each other. I accidentally attended the Senior Expo, and I say accidentally, because I was told that I needed to stop by, because our Congresswoman was stopping by, and she assumed that I was going to be there. But it was exceptionally attended, and we even made it onto her Twitter page, so good job, Emlyn and your crew with the Senior Expo. I went to my OCOC Board of Directors meeting, and then I went to a deployment send-off. Remind me a friend's name, because he was the first one to get one of my challenge coins, and it made me super happy.
Officer Cruz.
Oh, yes, Officer Cruz was deployed to Okinawa.
Yes, which is amazing. That's how multi-talented our officers are. But that was really nice.
Our new motor officer, by the way.
Motor officer. I didn't want to steal your thunder, I wanted you to say. All righty, and then I went to the, we got a new Board of Directors for Cal Cities. They will be sworn in at the end of this week. I went to the ACCO policymakers. A few of my colleagues went. I got me a nice little certificate, because I went to all four. So I was, it was so much good information, and then our city clerk was able to kind of disseminate it to everybody. So again, came back with something in my hand. I went to the Okayak that was, they basically were telling us about all of the safety issues, all like how terrorist threats happen, and if you want to get your mind blown, Google that. But it was exceptional, because I get to see exactly where my city stands and stuff like that. Like, we have a rep that's already on Okayak. We've got our chief, who is so familiar with the Uwasi, that he can just run down a whole bunch of stuff for you. But just to kind of see where we stand as a small city, two square miles, but we're right up there with the big boys. So it was, that was also very nice. I also attended that topping off ceremony out in the City of Irvine for the City of Hope, and it's just, it's an, it's an amazing thing. They were doing a fire evacuation when I rolled up, and you get to see the people that are being helped immediately, and it's so touching. You got to see the nurses, you got to see the doctors, you got to see the care with which they were providing service to their patients, and you could see that they really, they had a heart for them. So that was wonderful. I went to my Community Economic Development and Housing meeting, and I learned more about how the state is trying to partner with cities and some of the programming that they're trying to get going. I've got some stuff under my hat. I will be bringing it back to you if I can get it to flesh out. I attended a sunset Saturday, and then I also went on a SoCal Gas Tour, and was learning about how, you know, everybody's issue with solar is that once it gets dark, it's done. Like, no more solar for you. But they can use hydrogen to kind of encapsulate some of that energy and transfer it to a battery. And I was like, huh, we have to figure that out, because that's where it's all going. Like, we have hydrogen appliances, they're like at 30% hydrogen appliances. They have at SoCal Gas, anybody can go for this tour, they love it, they want everybody to come and see it, but they have a hydrogen house, where everything in the house is powered by hydrogen. And it is the most amazing thing. Have you ever seen hydrogen fire? It's blue, but it's only blue. Really light, pretty blue. But that was amazing, because then I'm thinking, how do we use that here? Like, I want to be ahead of the curve. How do we take solar, which some people are kind of getting disgruntled with, and then add that extra component, so that we can continue to utilize power? Then I went, and I spoke to a Girl Scout troop. Okay, so for y'all that don't know, I'm going to share with my colleagues, because you might get invited. Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts have a badge that they can collect just from speaking to an elected. And I have been the reason that several little troops have gotten theirs. It, it makes me really happy. So I got to do that. That was super cute, talking to Troop 1098. And then I also got to share with some first graders over at Rossmore Elementary, because they're starting their, their government portion. And then, I mean, what else can be said about the Celebrate Los Al the whole day? Like, it was just so... I've never been happy to wash windows. I was happily out there washing the windows, like, look at me, I'm washing the windows. It was so wonderful. I just, my city's the best. I don't care, anybody listening, my city's the best. And then the last thing is, and this has been on my brain, I think, since I moved into the area, I would like to rename Apartment Row. That name has never sat well with my spirit, and how do I do that?
Well, Madam Mayor, we actually, it was approved with the budget, we will be doing neighborhood signage this year as part of our CIP projects, and we can definitely look at alternative names and make sure that proper signage is accompanied that to help the changeover.
Thank you. I, I definitely appreciate that, because I want the name to match the neighborhood. I have a beautiful neighborhood. I have fantastic neighbors, so I would like to get some closure there. Now, last, I would like to adjourn in the memory of Nancy Fagan, our cute little firecracker that was just with us, so I'm so glad that we got to celebrate with her one more time. So we are going to adjourn in her honor this evening. At 7:20.